Are you good? All right, sounds good. If everyone's ready. Just in the nick of time there. Uh, the heat Thursday, June 27th meeting of the city of Ypsilanti Planning Commission is in session. Uh, can we get a roll call for attendance?
Commissioner Dunwoody.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Davis Jr. Commissioner Hollyfield. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Shear. Commissioner Jones Chance.
Present.
Commissioner Marin.
Motion would be in order to excuse the absence of Commissioner Smith.
So moved.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda approval. Uh, any questions or concerns on the makeup of the agenda this evening? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Brian, support by Michael, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, up next, we have approval of minutes of our May 15th meeting. Those minutes were included in the packet for review ahead of our meeting this evening. Any concerns with the contents of those minutes? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Phil, support by Michael, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. This is the portion of the planning commission meeting set aside for general public comment to the commission on any items for which there uh will not be a public hearing. We've had our public hearing on electronic messages message boards already, so this is the only opportunity here to speak publicly on the electronic message board event. Um, with that said, a motion would be in order to open the public comment. Motion by Michael, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. If you could just start with your name and we're going to try to limit comments to three minutes.
My name is Maurice Jordan. I hope you all can hear me. Um, I'm representing Second Baptist Church. Most of you have all already seen me represent the church as well. Um, I wanted to make clear tonight, um, the issue that's that you'll be dealing with tonight with respects to the EMB sign. It's not about the percentage of the digital space. That's not what you should be discussing because I think that's already been established that this is a commonly accepted practice used in our surroundings with the surrounding municipalities. However, we have overlooked the that the other municipalities have a much larger sign total. So they have much larger signs. So whether it's 50% or 80% or 25%, they're visible. What we're saying is a 16, 16 square, square foot sign with an eight square foot digital space would be appropriate. So I just want to point out that Ann Arbor, 50 square feet. Chelsea, 48 square feet. Ypsi Township goes from 30 to 50 square feet. Um, Pittsfield Township, no greater than 65 square feet. So what they're basically doing is being arranged so that they can deal with these on a case by case situation. Because let's take for example, um, the property on, let's say, North Hamilton Street, Olive, Olive Street down in that area, near Forest. Sign goes up there. That's, that's the CN mid zone. The speed limit posted is 25 miles an hour. Let's stay in that same zone and go in front of Catherine Street, North, South Hamilton, at Catherine down here. Where more than 10,000 cars a day go by that, go on that major thoroughfare at speeds exceeding 45 miles an hour. It's posted at 40, but they exceed 45 miles an hour on a regular basis. So we can't reasonably think that a 16 square foot sign for Olive Street is appropriate for a major thoroughfare on, in the same zone. This is what some of the other municipalities have done. In Jackson, they, they have what it called a zone administration. And what they do is take it case by case, look at the situation and then determine what should be the size of the sign. I want to draw your attention to something that, uh, the memo that Josh wrote, uh, to the city council. Particularly the last sentence of the second paragraph. The planning commission found it, it is vital that EMB regulations ensure the safety of motorists, minimize nuisance concerns and residents, and establishes size requirements that fit the needs of each zoning district. You have, you have to give the planning department and the building, building department some discretion. Some discretion if you didn't hear me. So I, I, I applaud you to really look at this situation and, and, and broaden the sign size so that they're legible. There are, there are metrics to do that. There are, there are ways to do that. I'm sure Josh may be familiar with it. Uh, but legibility is very important and it's a safety concern. If you only allow a square, a square foot sign, you are creating an unnecessary safety issue.
Very good. We, we appreciate the input. Uh, any other comments? Seeing down in the room, we don't have anybody on Zoom.
We've not.
Okay, very good. A motion would be in order to close the public comment.
Or.
By Michael, support by Phil, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, following the agenda here, we'll take a, a brief pause from the sign discussion and jump into committee reports. Mike, I'll turn to you uh, for updates from the non-motorized advisory committee.
Yeah, look, that's like, cause uh, we didn't have forums, so we didn't have an official meeting. Um, I was not able to attend. Um, but from what I heard from the chair, Dylan, uh, there was not much discussion outside of recapping the bike event that we had, which was very well received at about, I think, 40 and 50 folks that showed up and rode the the new bike infrastructure around town, got some great notes and feedback to pass along. Um, and I think that's primarily the highlight at this point. So just an idea briefing from there and looking at uh, possible funding streams we can identify for the city and, and bring in to continue our work. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions for Mike on non-motorized committee business?
Mike, um, I think at one point, um, I was, yeah, discussed, um, the maintenance of the bike paths. Did we have that discussion before?
Maybe. I don't remember specifically, but that sounds familiar.
Um, I only ask because some of those bike trails, some of those bike routes are, are really need some attention. They really do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm riding my bike down forest.
Yes.
And, and it was late. And I hit a pothole in the bike lane.
Hmm.
So I'm, I'm gonna have to go back to that maintenance issue uh, in regards to the bike lane thing. So if you guys can kind of pay a little bit more attention to that.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I know that's something we're continuing. Uh, every time we get a, uh, Ypsy staff person to come to our, uh, meetings. Um, uh, which we've been bouncing between Josh and Bonnie for a while. So, uh, yeah, that's really important, especially as we're expanding the amount. So, um, we do have kind of forest as a priority, uh, for us to, for the city to do preventative maintenance. Um, it doesn't seem like the, there's a major plan other than just patches. So, uh, if you have something, you know, send it to me or send it directly to Bonnie. That's who we're sending all of our stuff to. So, um, yeah, when potholes are in the bike lane, it's really, that's, that's when it's getting really bad.
And I don't need the, I don't need the hose, but the debris.
Oh, yes.
That comes.
Yep. Yeah, definitely.
Figure we're gonna have bike lanes. We should, we should, we should be making a strong effort at maintaining them.
Yep. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Anything else on the non-motorized advisory committee? Okay, moving along. Uh, nothing for presentations this evening. Uh, so we're onto old business. Josh, I will turn it over to you for staff presentation on the electronic message board size discussion.
All right. So I am going to show my screen really quickly. All right. So, um, part of what I wanted to do as part of this presentation is really look at, um, you know, what is it that we're requiring? What, what is it that we are regulating? Which is, you know, um, we put a 50% um, maximum for AMBs. Um, well, we put a 50% maximum for these. Like, let's say the maximum signage, um, is 16 square feet for freestanding sign, then you get eight square feet of um, an EMB. You know, you can still have the full 16 square feet, but it's just eight, uh, square feet can be the EMB and the other eight can be, you know, whatever else. Um, and I really wanted to, um, I really went around and looked at like, what do other communities do in terms of regulating their size? Um, and I saw that, you know, Ann Arbor, they, um, state that you cannot exceed more than 25% of the total area for, um, within EMB. And so let's say they had, um, 16 square feet as for required maximum sign, they would only be able to have four square feet for an EMB. And I pulled that directly from their zoning ordinance. Um, Celine had a 50% just like we do. Um, Dexter also had a 50%. Uh, Chelsea, um, Chelsea had the highest that I've seen in Washtenaw County, which was 80%. Um, and I think there, uh, Michelle might be able to comment a little bit more on that later, cause you was.
Yeah, I work there.
So, um, Pittsfield, again, they had, uh, 50% and Ypsi Township had 50%. And so, um, I know that there were people saying that this 50% number was arbitrary and while I was trying to look for, um, you know, a best practice, uh, report done by, I was hoping to find one done by the MAP or the APA, but I did not particularly find anything from them. I only found something from Pennsylvania's chapter of the APA. Uh, and they have the, um, they have this like whole presentation on the model sign ordinance. And, uh, what I found was interesting is that they said that, you know, for their model sign ordinance, um, that on-premise sign, like digital signs shall not, shall not exceed 30% of the total, um, sign area. Um, and as you can see on premises, those are just digital signs that, uh, that basically are for the tenants, um, of that property. So if it's owned by a church, then you know, the church, uh, they're the tenants. Off-premise is, would be like just general, like billboards. Um, you know, that you would find throughout a community. So, uh, yeah, and one of the things I noticed as well is that off-premise signs, um, they allow for the full area to be permitted as an EMB. Um,
Can I, can I pause you there real quick? Cause I feel like I'm missing something. Um, having a hard time gathering why we would be inclined to be more permissive to off-premise signs than on-premise signs? Like, I don't know if there's anything in your research that like suggests intent that feels unusual to me.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in my research that really provided why it would be, EMBs would be more permissive for off-premise signs, I imagine, because, you know, typically like an off-premise would be something like a billboard. Um, they would want to have as much, um, visibility as possible from anywhere on the highway. Um, and I mean, as you know, like the one EMB that we have on 94, like you can see that from a very far distance. Um, so I, I would assume that it probably has something to do with the fact that, you know, that you just want to see, you want as many people to see it as possible.
Yeah, I guess I'm forgetting that other places have to account for highway billboards more often than we do.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Mike?
Um, I was wondering, looking through your presentation and looking at the ordinance that we did, if at issue, if you go back to, let's say, Pittsfield Township or Ypsy Township. The, I wonder if the words, um, uh, allowable, allowable ground sign area are the big issue that we have? Where ours is 50% of the zoning district's maximum area rather than the individual property? And so did, did you look at that or did that come up in, when you guys were doing the research?
Um, this was the only thing I found in Ypsi Township, uh, in terms of, uh, like electronic signs. We could go to their code of ordinances. Um, but I mean, I've also not seen, uh, AMBs in this township that are building mounted signs. I've only seen ground signs.
Sounds, okay.
Uh, yeah.
That was just a, go, sorry.
Okay, thanks. I was gonna say I jumped in with my question. I wasn't sure if you had more that you wanted to share for the presentation.
Oh, um, I mean, I did get a couple of light readings as well. Um, and one of the things I wanted to point out is, this is an Ypsy Township, it's right off of South Huron. Um, the EMB sign, I should have highlighted it. It's right here. And when I went to go get my reading, um, part of the difficult part, part of the difficult thing is that a lot of these EMB signs are located on already like lit roads. And so when you're taking a light reader, it's going to be not just reading the EMB, but reading all the lights around it. Um, so that makes it really difficult to get any type of EMB like light reading. Um, I thought this one was a little bit better suited than other places I found. Um, and I didn't particularly do like any township buildings because town, you know, they're exempted from their own zoning ordinance. So they're, they could have a brighter sign if they wanted to. Um, what I did find is that in the middle of the driveway, uh, which you can see, you can't see my, oh yeah, you can see my cursor. Like, like right here, I got a point one foot candle reading. And then at the property line, I didn't even register any of the light to begin with. I didn't get any readings over here because, you know, there were streetlights, um, along the street, but, um, and I, there was also streetlights at the, there were streetlights at the corner of Morgan and South Huron, and there was also, um, the traffic lights as well. So it's, it's really hard to get these readings without trying to pick up on any lights, but, um, you know, the, the sign did appear bright, but at the property line, um, it does not exceed, uh, point, I believe it's point three for the property line, um, that we would see in our ordinance.
Great. Any other questions?
Yes. Uh, Josh, I just wondered, uh, I, I, I didn't look myself, but a comparison would be to regulation of light and sound and movement in commercial window displays. Are they regulated in Ypsilanti? I didn't see anything, but I'm wondering if that's something that would provide a source of comparison.
Like, are you talking about like, just like animated signs and like a commercial window? Like?
Well, there's, there's a window that I, that I have in mind on, on Michigan and, uh, and when it's late at night, uh, the perimeter lights around the window, they're, they're extremely bright. At least they, they have been in the past. I wondered if that was regulated and I'm wondering if at certain times of the year, people use music and have animations in windows with sound, if that's something that gets regulated.
So right now, those are illegal. I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Um, and we have head code enforcement going out and enforcing these signs. You know, obviously it's a little bit difficult when they're not here at night, but um, as far, as I, as I have known, um, one of our code enforcement officers has been currently enforcing on animated signs.
Okay, I'm just looking for something to draw a comparison with. We're, we're they seem to be fairly constrictive, uh, 30%, 50%. Um, I think a couple of examples didn't have any regulation of, of, uh, by, by percentage. In any event, uh, I was looking to see if there was something else that would guide us, but I don't see anything.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's kind of what's difficult is that, again, it's really hard to get light readings and a lot of ordinances. Um, they don't specify why it is that they have that percentage. You know, a lot of ordinances, um, I mean, obviously to minimize nuisance, safety concerns, um, and whatnot, but there isn't a specific um, report that I've seen that's been like, this is why it's this number and it should be this number across the board.
So in the way of, um, having, having the new information here, I just wanted to kind of recap how we got here, cause I know Michelle knew to some of this. I know Michael was in our May meeting. So we saw this, um, in what, December, the first time?
Yeah.
And it, it came before us because it was brought to our attention that the sign ordinance didn't allow for any electronic message, message signs in, uh, do you recall offhand which zones?
We didn't allow EMB signs at all.
Okay, no EMB signs at all.
Hmm.
So when we initially recommended to council, an update to the zoning ordinance to allow half of the, the existing sign space to be digital, that went to council. Council came back uh, with some direction to planning commission to consider a larger sign area being allowed for electronic message board. Um, they had a number, right?
35, like square feet just across the board.
35 square feet for the electronic portion specifically.
Yeah.
No.
35 feet for the entire sign, 50% of that electronic?
Um, no, like they wanted, they were recommending, uh, to allow 35 square feet for just EMB signs alone.
Okay. So where we, when we discussed this in May, um, we wanted some of this information on the questions that had come up when we previously discussed it. But that's kind of where we find ourselves. We have, we have the ordinance update that we voted to approve previously. And we have a recommendation from council for kind of an alternative proposal that would have a, a fixed square footage of EMB regardless of zone. I miss anything there?
Mr. Chairman, may, may I?
Yes.
I have some thoughts. All right.
Let's hear them.
My, uh, my name is Michelle. I'm new, Michelle Marin. Um, I did do my homework. I watched the portion of the May meeting where you discussed this and the council meeting, um, where they were looking at your recommendations. I did not watch the January meeting because it's not on the YouTube, but I did read the minutes. So I've done my homework. I feel like I'm pretty well versed in what you've covered so far. I do have some thoughts, not just about the sign area, but some other areas of this as well. For context, I'm a planning consultant. I work in some of the communities that were mentioned, um, in Josh's presentation. And we've written sign ordinances before. So, um, regarding the, the language for the sign area in the different communities, I'm almost certain that the percent, that 50% or 80% is of the, the area of the individual sign, not, not establishing a maximum area for AMBs with reference to what the freestanding or building mountain sign max area is. So I think it's important to, right now with the language, there's some ambiguity there. If I were to read this as someone proposing a sign, I would say, oh, let me see how large of an area I can get. Oh, if the max is, um, 16 square feet, then I can get an eight square foot EMB without considering any other part of the area. If it's a monument sign, what have you. Um, so I think the language has to be specific. I want to thank the gentleman for bringing up some important points. Maurice, I didn't catch your last name. Um, I do not think it's appropriate to allow discretion for sign area to go to the building or to stop. I think since it's a numerical value, we have to establish limits within ordinance. Um, discretion would be more appropriate for something like landscaping, you know, um, so I don't, we have to establish actual square footage limits. Um, looking at the three zoning districts where it's being recommended to permit these, the language currently has it that freestanding and build, and, um, building mounted signs can be permitted in the CN center and corridor districts. Right now, freestanding signs are not permitted in the center district at all. So we would essentially be going past what's currently permitted and allowing freestanding EMBs where freestanding signs aren't allowed of at all. And in the corridor districts, freestanding signs are not permitted for residential uses currently. So we're now opening up the door to allow a lot more signage and the, only if they're EMBs. And I don't know if that's the, the intention of why this was explored. Um, but I, as a resident, as a community member, I am very wary of permitting that. I think it would be appropriate to permit these also only for non-residential uses, non-residential properties, because otherwise now we've got all these properties in the CN who can now put an EMB on their resident. I don't, I don't think that's we, what we want. I don't, I mean, I don't know how y'all are thinking, but that's certainly not what I would want.
Um, we will have electronic rental signs.
Absolutely, which are already against the zoning ordinance, uh, which I won't get into. Um, so I think in addition to changing the sign area, we need to indicate that it's for non-residential parcels. I don't think they should be permitted as freestanding signs in the center district where regular freestanding signs are not permitted. I'm also if, uh, looking at number six underneath the, the new language, the sign design standards for EMB. I'm actually not sure if this constitutes content-based regulation. I actually talked to my big boss and he wasn't sure either. This is, I don't know if this has been tested.
Number six being the text color?
Yes, text color. Cause if we are saying that it has to be text, we are saying that it can't be pictures. And I don't know if that's been tested in courts yet. Um, so if we want to be the first, okay, but if not, uh, maybe we should just stick to monochrome in color, which I think would be fair. Um, I don't see regulations for color temperature, which there are for other parts of the ordinance or other parts of the sign ordinance. 3000 would be appropriate, 3000 Kelvin would be appropriate. And I think that was enough at first. What, what do y'all think?
Mind if I added one thing? Cause it's right, right in the line.
Yeah.
Cause you, you kind of almost said exactly what I wanted to add was that the, what city council proposed was a 35, maximum 35 square feet for EMB signs, which means EMB signs would be allowed to be bigger than other types of signs. So, so we would only have EMB signs going forward, like to be a little bit hyperbolic. We would have, the majority applicants, I think, would be wanting to do an electronic message, cause you can get more than double. Um, if you do electronic versus not electronic.
Yeah, I think that, um, when we talked about this in May, I think that an across the board area for electronic message board signs was kind of unpopular. Right? That was, that was the vibe that I got in May. If I'm misreading that, if anybody disagrees. What we have now in the zoning ordinance is imperfect, but it does allow for different number of signs and different sign areas in different zones. And I think that that is appropriate. So I'm a, I'm, I'm, for me personally, I'm a fan of kind of continuing with the percentage, right? I don't, I don't care for council's proposal for, you know, a 35 square foot or any number across the board. I don't think it should be a number across the board. I think it should be a percentage across the board. Um, if we're going to proceed, then I think the real issue we have with the zoning ordinance now is that perhaps the, the area in some of our, um, zones is too restrictive. And I think that's what the conversation tonight needs to focus on.
Meaning the 16 is too small.
Yeah. 16 is real small.
What, what was the, I, I feel like maybe we don't have it right. What was the exact, um, recommendation from council? Is, is it 35 or is it up to 35 or some other qualifier?
Like it was, uh, it was up to 35.
Okay. So it's not 35 across the board.
It could go up to 35 across the board.
Assuming some other parameters, which I'm imagining they were hoping that we would set.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's what's so difficult about the, and I, I think pretty much is the free mounted signs. I think that are the major concerns that I have because in looking at like CN, the CN district, that, uh, remounted signs can just maximum area 16 feet. That's, that's it. Where the building mounted signs are one square foot per foot of building frontage or 100 square feet, which is ever less.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's going to be, you know, you can up to 16 feet, there's no other parameters. You can just get a 16 foot sign, then if you go to 35, it's just going to be 35, cause there's no other parameters as a city council. I, I just noticed that there's a hand raised on the Zoom, uh, Josh. Oh, it's Steve Wilcox.
Steve. There we go.
Don't, maybe we shouldn't unmute him then.
Oh, maybe he was.
Uh, you can go ahead and unmute. Eve, welcome.
Hi folks, how are you doing?
Good. Thanks.
What you got for us, Steve?
He's just saying hi.
Eve, we lost ya.
Just checking in. Okay, get back with us when you can.
Remind me which zone was included in the original application for the zoning text amendment? Remind me which zone was included in the original application for the zoning text amendment. I believe it was C N mid. Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can.
Okay, sorry, uh, my battery just died and everything went black. Um, uh, sorry, I'm not there in person. I was in Detroit for a SNCOG meeting and didn't get back until late, so, um, joining here. Um, as far as the, uh, thirty-five foot question from city council, that was, that was just kind of a, that was based on the fifty percent rule in the, in the previous size. So the thirty-five percent was to, to make the fifty percent, uh, up to the seventeen foot. And, uh, you know, that was just, it, it was a ridiculous conversation and it went round and round in circles. So I don't know what the actual language was that got, they got sent to you guys. But the only reason that there was a thirty-five foot considered was because of the fifty percent rule. And what would be the easiest way to, you know, when people were trying to accommodate the church, basically. Um, so you know, with that being said, I don't, I don't know exactly what was forwarded, uh, to you guys, but that, that's the only reason thirty-five foot was being considered was because of the fifty, fifty percent rule. And I brought up the, the point then that, you know, that's, that's a, that's a weird way to go about it by allowing, you know, twice the size just so they could have an E M B that's seventeen feet. Why not just make it a seventeen foot E M B and, and leave it at that? So, um, I hope that clarifies that. There were, it was just math games. It was like, how do we get this to be the size that they want, you know, and so, um, that's kind of where it came from. But, um, you know, I, I appreciate Michelle's comments, uh, from a, a few minutes ago too, but um, allowing things that aren't currently allowed too, so.
Thanks Steve. Brian, does that answer your question?
Almost, uh, maybe, uh, it could have, um, maybe, maybe I'm just dumb right now. But, so it sounds like they're talking about a thirty-five, uh, a thirty-five, um, square foot maximum size for the total sign so that they can get to an E M B only area that is seventeen and a half square. So it wasn't thirty-five square feet of E M B?
No.
Okay, so that, I, I thought maybe we, okay.
Uh, any other questions for Steve while we have him?
Uh, yeah, so is the, I mean, is the, is the goal here, is, did it get just voted down just because they want it larger? I mean, is that what we're really dealing with here? From council?
No, it, it was the question of how this impacted other areas. And as, you know, M- Michelle pointed out, um, and you know, you guys had deliberated on, uh, before we went to council, um, you know, that it had farther reaching, um, yeah, farther reach into the, into the codes than, than what we, was immediately in front of us. And so if there's any changes to any of this, we just wanted to be consistent, um, with the code and, and, you know, have, have you guys, you know, check into it again, so.
Thank you. Um, I'm of kind of two minds here because I, I don't, I don't love the motivation for us modifying our sign code being, you know, one use on one particular parcel, right? Because the decisions we make about the sign ordinance are going to affect C N mid. They're going to affect the core neighborhood zones, uh, more largely. Um, that concern is tempered a little bit for me because we are in the core neighborhood zone. We do have a lot of residential uses. The current sign ordinance restricts residential uses for signs separately from non-residential uses for signs. Um, and our non-residential uses in these zones is relatively limited, right? We, we don't have, um, we don't have the density of non-residential uses in these zones that we do in, you know, in center. Or something like that. And so I, I I'd be okay with, with increasing the maximum area just for signs in core neighborhood. Um, and I don't know whether it's thirty-five feet to get us to a specific number in the end, but I think there's a case to be made there that sixteen feet is restricted. I don't, um, I don't think there's a path forward really to give discretion to planning staff or to building staff, right? Cause like, once we permit this, it is allowed. It's not special use. There is no, you know, we don't have authority to kind of pick and choose on a case-by-case basis. Whatever we permit is going to be allowed here. For, for, my thought on next steps is that we need to figure out what maximum area that we're comfortable with. Interested in feedback from other commissioners on that.
I think that makes sense. Um, I would like to have discussion about Michelle's point of these, um, being restricted to non, non-residential uses.
Can you show the zoning ordinance, the bit, um, specifically section one twenty-two, four forty-two?
Let me just pull it up real quick.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, right now in our, um, in our subdivision for core neighborhoods, we have permissible uses and then we have non-dimensional, uh, non-use and dimensional requirements for site improvements, not regulated by building type. That includes signs that is already separated residential and non-residential. So the residential freestanding signs are limited to ten square feet of maximum area. Non-residential is, um, uh, freestanding sixteen feet of maximum area. I don't know, it's maybe hard to see that here, but, but what we're talking about, what we're talking about is that sixteen feet number that applies just to non-residential uses and group living for freestanding signs.
Yeah, right. But I'm interested in talking about scrolling up.
The residential signs?
Yeah.
Okay.
About specifically saying that electronic message signs are not permitted in residential uses. Which I believe is what you said.
Right. So each of these, there should be a separate box for E M Bs if we're now permitting this new sign type under non-residential uses and residential uses for each of the districts across the board. Not just in the three and the sub ones that are being considered.
I think we actually overlooked this when we drafted the ordinance. Um, I don't know. I don't know. I don't, I don't ever recall us really talking about what there was gonna happen at residential, at residential uses in the signs. Um, I did not go look back in the, the minutes. Um, but if we're gonna talk about making some amendments, I think this is a really good one to discuss. I did notice, sorry Matt, I did notice freestanding signs, at least in the core neighborhoods are not permitted. That's great. So we are pretty much talking about building mounted signs right now. I'm on page one eighteen.
Say that again about freestanding signs in core neighborhood?
Um, make sure I have my core neighborhood.
Freestanding signs aren't permitted in core neighborhood.
Freestanding signs are not permitted in residential uses. Um, built, so we're talking about building mounting signs. And, oh, I misread this. So in core neigh, in core neighborhood, it's a maximum area of one square feet. I thought it was a half a square feet.
The building mounted sign?
Yeah, I, I read, I flipped temporary and permanent. So in core neighborhoods, we're only talking about a twelve inch by twelve inch sign. And as long as we, I can, and hate it, but I could live with it as long as it's not moving, which we have as prohibited now. Full disclosure, in my mind, we don't enforce our ordinances adequately enough in this city. So they are going to be moving signs. Um, I mean, we can't get people to take down L E D strips that they three M glued onto downtown buildings. We certainly aren't gonna get our rentals to comply. Um, sorry, Michelle.
I, I missed the, does, was there discussion on why the commission wants to permit building mounted E M Bs? Cause that's not typical and I'm just curious what the thinking was.
The thinking was, if I can speak for the commission, um, n- not to distinguish between freestanding and building mounted signs. Um, because I don't think that we heard a compelling case why they should be permitted separately. Not to say that that wasn't short-sighted.
I think there's a big character difference between freestanding E, E M Bs that have, you know, whatever fifty percent, eighty percent that take up that much of the sign area and then building mounted E M Bs. I wanna make sure we're all aware.
Uh, interested in thoughts on E M Bs for residential uses. Um, I, I feel like I've heard opinions on a few folks that whatever the outcome of this ordinance should be, we're maybe not interested in E M Bs for residential purposes. Uh, any other thoughts on that?
The, the only limitation that's stated in the ordinance now is that it shouldn't be a nuisance. In other words, whatever you're doing, it's okay to do it so long as it's not a nuisance.
As it relates to, to what specifically?
To, to the signage, electronic signage. I saw that in reading the ordinance. And I didn't, I, I took some notes on some of the stuff, but not that. But that's the only standard that I, that I see about whether or not to have electronic message boards. You, you shouldn't have them if they're a nuisance. Um, my thought is the people who know about conveying information by advertising or advertising agencies and people who are in advertising, maybe there's, maybe someone from that business would have something to contribute to our understanding about, uh, the worth of electronic message boards. Conveying messages at all.
I mean, that's, that's a fair point, Carl. I think we're already, I mean, currently this ordinance is live. So it's out in the, well, oh, it's not, it's not live, right? It's only been the first read, first reading. Yeah, okay. So, I mean, I felt like when we're talking about the residential uses, honestly, I think you're right, Matt. I just might think that it felt like we're very much under the gun. At the same time, we're opening up this E M B discussion. We're also doing the R V discussions because there's, there was enforcement actions all over the city and there's a Z B A thing that's been referred to us. I kind of feel like for the residential, we just scooted right on past that. I'm looking at all the memos. Everything's really focused on non-re, non-residential uses.
I don't even see why we would have, um, E M B signs in a residential area anywhere. But for what reason? I mean, if someone can enlighten me on that, why would someone want an E M B sign?
Think maybe to Carl's point, those, what I was kind of saying, the drift I was getting is advertising rentals. You know, I think if I was to think of why I would want an electronic sign in a, on a residential home, other than to say I'm great.
So, so, I mean, are you saying like, when I see these signs that says, um, let me just throw in, you know, built property that's plattered on, on a house to let you know that that's built property. Um, are you saying that, uh, we can at some point, or they can at some point replace those signs with an electronic sign?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And those signs are currently not compliant with the zoning ordinance.
That's too intrusive for me or, or the neighbors. That's, I, I, I wouldn't even think about anything to that point. It, it just brings so much into it.
So help me, help me focus this on kind of next steps, right? Cause we have, we have what we've previously approved in which electronic message board sign gets permitted to some extent in core neighborhood center and our corridors. And they get permitted as, uh, at fifty percent of whatever the sign type standards in that district would allow for currently. Right? So that is, that is kind of what we proposed before with all of the additional restrictions on color and type and motion and what have you. Um, it sounds like we need to send this back to staff or some modifications to kind of the proposed language. Um, you know, we're not going to vote on an amendment tonight, right? Because we, we, I think want to, we want to get clarity on some of that language, right? Um, so in terms of next steps here, we want that language to include a restriction on electronic message board signs for residential uses in our core neighborhood and corridor districts. Yes? And we can debate this more when the text gets proposed, but I want to make sure we're given clear direction to staff here.
I would, I would like to see, um, um, and I missed last month, so, I was waiting for a little bit. I would like to see what we proposed and what we sent to council and what council sent back to us. I would like to see those two documents right next to each other.
Well, that's in the packet, Mike.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that it's in the packet, that, that, that's, I know that's there, but at the same time, I hadn't had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
As, as, as opposed to, I know what we sent to council, but I'm not understanding what council sent back to us. And, and and in saying that, why can't we just take a closer look at the things that we sent to them, the things that they sent back to us and come to some kind of um, conclusion about what would be best?
I think that's what we're doing now.
I mean, if we take it, if we take it, as far as I'm concerned, we can take it from, for each zone, zone by zone and see.
I think it's actually really s- simple because I think, and I, Steve confirmed this, all that sent, council sent us was change the maximum to thirty-five square feet. That's all.
That's it.
Yes. Because I think the goal was to get the electronic message board to be equal to the current maximum of sixteen square feet. They wanted to go up a little bit more. It's thirty-five, gets you to, uh, Brian said seventeen and a half. That's all that council gave us.
The motion from that meeting they had, I don't know if Steve's still on. It, 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 they postponed it, they postponed the first reading until after the planning commission meets and completes their review. That was the action.
A review of the review.
In terms of, in terms of clarity for staff on changes to the proposed text here, um, I think we should discuss building mounted signs. Um, and, and Michelle, you had indicated that in your experience, electronic message boards for building mounted signs, uh, tends to be less permitted than for freestanding signs. I'm interested in, um, thoughts from the rest of the commission on whether it's worth distinguishing.
I am, uh, I don't know, I'm just more liberal with land uses and I am reticent to um, put limitations on things for reasons of primarily, you know, character, um, just because it's, uh, it's a little subjective and, uh, I mean, it's just, unless there's a compelling reason, I, I think it's unnecessarily restrictive on land use.
You first. I feel like there is a place for building mounted signs. And my hesitation here is that if we allow for freestanding signs to be electronic but not building mounted signs, we're just incentivizing more signs to be freestanding as opposed to building mounted. And that, like, that incentive, I, I have a hard time making sense of incentivizing.
You mean, uh, do you mean freestanding or monument? Or I guess freestan, mon- monument signs are freestanding, but.
I, I'm, I'm thinking if I want an electronic message board, um, then that's going to compel me to have a freestanding sign as opposed to a building mounted sign. Like, I'm going, i- if we allow one of them, I'm going to have my electronic message board. I guess for me, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel like, like the community's better off with having another freestanding sign there as opposed to a building.
I mean, the only thing I, unless, uh, unless someone knows differently, I mean, the only thing I can think of would be some aesthetic reason. And I, I just don't.
I think I just wonder what the city of Ipsy has to gain from a bunch of electronic message board signs. You know, and, and it just, I just don't, I don't see it. I, 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 it doesn't make, I, I don't know what we're gaining in our master plan by just allowing the proliferation of building mounted, you know, I, sure, they're gonna be twelve by twelve, whatever. I, I don't get it. I don't see what it's adding value to our community.
I agree.
I, I think if we want to drill down into it and really get into the debate of building mounted signs of a square, of one square feet in non-residential uses only, then I think maybe we can compromise on that. Residential uses to me seems really the wrong idea. Um, but I do think, I want to forget Matt, cause we've kind of been going around to talk about the sixteen square foot maximum. I think for sure, talk about that and provide direction to staff.
Yeah, and I am kind of curious, um, because so you did vote in support. so you did vote in support of like the proposed text amendment? And it sounds like your, what, what you're proposing, what you're saying, your opinion on electronic message board signs feels contradictory to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, this is, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, and I'm not like, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm not intending to put you on the spot for this, right? I'm trying to, trying to figure out like, if, if it's a specific part of the text that we're discussing that changes kind of the value proposition for you? Or if the more you spend time considering this, the more you don't see the, the value.
Yeah, I think it's.
Like I said, value a thousand.
I think it's a little bit of both, but primarily, uh, I was mis, mistaken and I thought that these signs were not permitted at all in residential uses. I misread the zoning code, so had I known what I know now, I wouldn't have voted yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we have a hand.
Your hand's still up, Steve?
Yeah, that's me.
Steve, uh, we're gonna leave you unmuted and, and just holler if you need something, um, because I have not been paying close attention to the hand.
Okay, I've been giving Josh notes in the, uh,
Okay, great.
In the chat, so, um, there's, there was a question about, uh, you know, Michael, you know, wanted to see these things side by side, what was put before council and what council had set back and, and if I recall correctly, the council was, was, was reviewing the EMB portion of it because it hadn't been, uh, allowed before. And the confusing got part got, came up when, when the size of the sign came up, right? So I, I think what came before council was just about the EMB portion. And all this other stuff was not, was not there because you hadn't deliberated on it, right? But, um, so, you know, what council wasn't specific in the, in the recommendations coming back because we knew that there was a lot more uh, involved in, you know, and, and this is coming to light in this conversation in terms of residential uses. Uh, you know, the, the mounted signs versus the freestanding signs and as far as that goes, the, you know, in those various zones, um, you know, a lot of those businesses wouldn't have space to put a freestanding sign or monument sign, so that's, that's a little bit different when there's not as much of a setback. You know, I don't, you know, the, the examples that Josh was giving with the Bethesda church, you know, that's, that's, that's a ways off the road. And that's, that's even a ways from the building itself. But if, if we're doing some of these, these, uh, cores, you know, there's, there's much less setback from the road, so that is how, how I'm thinking about those things, different. You know, like the proximity to the, to the traffic and things like that.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Where does that put us in terms of a recommendation to staff or a request from staff if we're looking for modified language on terms of building?
Well, I saw, I felt like I saw a general consensus. I don't know, I'm not sure about Brian, but, um, with at least not having them in residential use.
Residential never even crossed my mind.
Well, so I, I think that like, I did, the first thing we kind of said in terms of the revised text is no electronic message boards for residential uses.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In terms of clarity to Josh, I'm kind of assuming like, I thought we had pretty good consensus on that, so I'm assuming that's kind of baked in.
Okay, great.
And so, and that's the point, you know, that I tried to make, that, that was not something that I was considering in, in the first place, so it was just about the rest of the, the other areas. And as you know, we'll say that was quite difficult to get.
Bill, can you use your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, part of the other problem that we had, you know, years ago, and we're not even talking about the electronic message sign, was dealing with family dollar because they wanted, uh, a freestanding sign, you know, and, and that was contingent on them building that building. You know, and I, 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 I think, uh, percentage is the best way to go for the, the, the signs that are allowable for that area, not just for anywhere and everywhere. And, and again, uh, neighborhood was not, you know, what I was envisioning at all. So I, as far as I'm concerned, there, whatever tentative language you come up with, you know, just make it different for, uh, for, uh, for neighborhood, you know, and then we just deal with the other areas. And, and I think for me, I, I think if we use a percentage, allowable percentage, I think we'd be better. And I don't have a problem with, um, uh, building mounted signs of any nature. You know, because I mean, if you look at some of the place, I'm pretty sure not every building out here is going to end up getting a, uh, electronic message board. I, I just, I just don't believe that. But, you know, we talk about, you know, trying to predict, predict the future, but you know, you think about years ago, uh, the resistance to, uh, shared roads with bicycles. That shit, I mean, I'm sorry, that was hard. You know what I'm saying? And so, I'm sorry, that verbal trust comes out sometimes. So, so, you know, we, we, you know, we make change, because I mean, if, if we're not, uh, amenable to change, why are we here if we're just gonna continue with status quo? You know, why are we here? Because we get to like, what it says, Joe, I mean, uh, Josh, and it says blah, 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 okay, we're done. You know what I'm saying? So if we're not willing to make changes that will entice, uh, uh, different groups to, to come here, you know, what are we gonna do? You know, look how long we've been dealing with the farm down here, you know, Water Street. You know, it's been vacant forever, you know, and that, that was businesses that I used that, you know, that I spent my money at. Now there's two places in the city of Ipsilanti that I spent money, the rest of my money goes to the towns. So, you know, we gotta make it more amenable for people to want to come here and, and stay here and build here and spend here. Do we have to bend over backwards to do that? No, I don't think so, but I, I think we should take steps that, that makes it a little bit easier for people to want to come here and, and do whatever it takes to, to make this their home.
In that spirit, I feel like it would be really helpful for staff to look at the, the same thing they did regarding the building mounted signs that they did, I think with your freestanding signs, regarding a percentage or maximum square foot. It's hard to maybe give, for me to give specific direction, like going off of Phil, because like in corridor, the per, it would be up to 100 square feet, a building mounted sign, but in core neighborhoods, it would be one square foot. Uh, so I don't know what direction to give, but maybe.
That one square foot is just for residential uses, right? When the, when the zoning ordinance was updated for signs, there was a, a specific carve out for historical plaques. That is the historical plaque carve out. And yeah, so it, it sounds like we have general consensus on wanting to proceed with percentages, so we, it sounds like, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, so holler if I'm being too simplistic here, but I think there's a consensus, we don't want electronic message boards for residential use, and I think there's a consensus that we want a percentage of whatever allowable sign use to be dedicated or to be allowed, I shouldn't say dedicated, to be allowed for electronic message boards. So our questions are, are we comfortable with that percentage being 50%? And then our other question is, are we comfortable with the maximum area of 16 square feet for freestanding signs for non-residential uses in core neighborhoods? Those are the two questions we have to answer. Um, 50% is a number I'm comfortable with. Um, 16 feet, I think I would be happy to increase.
Same, same. I think the staff did a very compelling amount of research that showed that 50% was very in alignment with a lot of the surrounding communities.
Others?
It could go higher, but 50 is good for me.
I haven't, if you ask me, I'm, I'm willing to target, uh, what is it, Chelsea, 80.
It's only permitted, uh, on monument signs, which is probably worth noting.
And does the day consider monument different from freestanding signs?
Monument's a type of freestanding sign, so other freestanding signs that aren't monument signs can't have EMBs.
So our next question then, if I'm not hearing, well, I'm, I'm hearing Phil on, on 80%, but, um, I think I'm hearing more voices in support of 50%, so in terms of a direction to Josh, I think that's what I'm focused on for the moment.
I think it depends on what that, I mean, I, how we change that 16 square feet, how much that increases? Because like this gentleman said, the, the speed at which cars are traveling in area, like that's going to influence whether or not 50% is enough of whatever sign area we decide to increase 16 to. See what I'm saying?
They do, yep.
We need, um, cardboard cutouts of all the percent, the, the proposed sign, signs that you got, Josh.
That would be excellent, yeah, I, I'm such, I'm a visual person, yeah, that, that would be excellent. I need to see what the actual, what would the actual look like?
And, and we can, we can refine that when we debate this more in our July meeting, right? Like we, we have the opportunity to refine that number when we vote, but for the purpose of giving some direction, um, I think it would be useful for us to like, establish an intent right now. Not feeling very decisive, but I do think that should be our next step.
Why, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a question, procedurally, do you all ever like, because I know sometimes you gotta sit, I certainly need to look at the numbers. How do your chairman and you, Josh, feel about like us doing track change edits on the ordinance PDF or whatever, and then giving them to you and you can like sort of synthesize? I mean, I'm not saying like, oh, let's all have homework, but I'm saying if. If, if a commissioner wanted to do that, like, is that?
Yeah, so, so I, I think historically our tendency has been to try to give like on the record verbal direction to staff in these meetings. Uh, but we've done that from time to time when some of those discussions get a little bit more complicated than we can do verbally, like this one, yeah. Yeah, so I, I have no problem with like, with there being, you know, markups sent to Josh to kind of incorporate into that, um, proposed text. One of the, one of the hesitations that I have is just how much participation we have from everybody doing that, right? So if we're getting a proposed text, like, I am trying to get a little bit of consensus here for that text amendment. Um, and so if we have everybody's input to kind of continue to build consensus, then I think that kind of maintains the, the status quo more or less. Um, but that's not a, that's a hesitation, not a deal breaker.
I think, um, in our discussions, I think, uh, with respect to the things that Michelle brought up and the, uh, inconsistencies with the rest of the code, I think when we make decisions on specific items, I'm always sort of assuming that the language will be worded in a way to not affect other things that are already, that, you know, that we're not discussing changing. Um, so maybe if we can make sure that we have consistency across all of those other changes on this go around, that would be, would be nice. So I think between that and residential use, we have, we have two points of consensus.
We're almost there.
We're getting there.
I think 35 is too big. I, I think 35 is bigger than I'm comfortable with.
Yeah. By the procedures, we're not supposed to address your comments during the meeting.
You have to, I'm sorry, sir. Sorry, I'm sorry.
We, we can, we can propose to Josh whatever, um, we think for next meeting. Um, and then we can debate that, like, we have the opportunity to discuss that more, 35, um, 35 feels big to me for a core neighborhood.
35 would be roughly like six by six?
Yeah.
And 16 is?
Can be seven by five.
And so 16 square feet would be four by four?
I think 24 is an interesting number.
Okay.
Your feeling is non-committal as I am, huh?
And that's just an actual hypothetical. Say for instance, we have these, um, signs in place. Say, we have these, these, this ordinance in place. Um, we have a street that, uh, speed limit may be $40, I'll just, like the gentleman had, um, indicated about the Hamilton Street. And then we have a street that's heavily traveled, 40 miles per hour. And now we do, they're restricted to this 35 whatever percentage, right? But then we have the other street that, uh, traffic is much lighter. Uh, um, uh, speed limit is lower. So they can capture that whatever sign that they can see as they're going. But on the other hand, we have these restrictions, still the restriction that's on a slow one, is there's still restrictions on a fast one. The fast, the fast street with the most traffic is not going to be able to catch as much as they did on the slow. So should we be making a, a comparison in regards to, um, if you have such and such amount of traffic and such and such amount of speed that this would be associated with that? And if you have, on the other hand, if you have such and such amount of traffic, it's slower and slower, then this will be what you should have.
I mean, that's, you have kind of a loose tie if we're going corridors and core neighborhoods, right? Like your corridors are going to be the more heavily trafficked. And, and so I don't, you know, I don't think that we have anything in our ordinance that ties like any signs or anything else to speed limits specifically because speed limits can be dynamic, right?
But maybe we should.
Maybe we should.
I guess maybe.
Maybe we should.
Maybe.
We're moving forward, we, we got to have forward thinking, that just because it's not there, I don't, don't mean that it shouldn't be there or it can't be there.
I see what you're saying, Michael. My thing is looking at zoning, zoning history is, that's how we got to the previous zoning code? Was doing smaller and smaller zoning codes to have more and more minutia on the type of use, right? So that's maybe the one concern as we keep like narrowing this down. Um, the other would be to say, is core neighborhood mid different than the other core neighborhoods? So, because that's what we're talking about. The problem is core neighborhood mid, to be frank, that's the problem.
This street right here. But like core neighborhood, the signs in core neighborhoods are uniform, right? Like the sign ordinance in, in core neighborhoods don't distinguish between core neighborhood mid and any other core neighborhood.
And I think maybe that's what, what I'm, I'm squaring the zoning code with what Michael's talking about. Um, is that maybe that's really where the issue is, because we're talking about specific core neighborhood streets that, core neighborhood mid streets that are different than core neighborhood streets. I don't know. I, I don't know if it's a direction I want to give to, but that's the kind of translation, so.
I want to talk about that 24 square feet number.
Let's do it. Sounds perfect.
That's strong language. Thoughts from this side of the room?
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm more interested in, in, in being liberal, I just, I don't. I, I wish someone could explain to me like exactly what the issues are with the size of, um, you know, was it 3,000 Kelvin?
Yes.
Signs, and, and like this additional, uh, 11 square feet or whatever we're talking about here, like what is, what is the difference and impact on that and what is it impacting? And why is it so terrible?
Visual clutter, road safety, character of the neighborhood, uh, in terms of color temperature, that if the color temperature is higher, lighters appear to be, uh, at a higher illumination, so they can still be within the standards, but in the, in the foot camp, they can comply with the foot candle requirement, but can still appear very glaring. And so like gas station canopy lights, those are like 4,000 Kelvin. And I mean, we don't want to be driving around looking at that horrible light, I mean.
Oh, Summit in North Congress would be a great example of a light that technically fits, uh, in that liquor store. Uh, it's an unshielded lamp at 4,000 degrees Kelvin. Uh, it's an unshielded lamp at 4,000 degrees Kelvin. And sure doesn't make it seem like a friendly place that you want to be in.
So. I guess, I don't know. Are, are there any like more objective measures? Like I, I'm just saying, I'm hearing a lot of subjectivity and, you know, we had a similar discussion. You know, back when I was on council about noise at parks near Depot Town, people living in Depot Town. And it's like, I get it, but if you move to an area that has literally been a train depot for the last almost, you know, quarter of a millennia, I mean, like you're gonna hear a train every now and then, and you're gonna hear noise at the park if you move behind a park. And so, you know, we can't treat every neighborhood like it's a cul-de-sac in Mayberry. So. This 11 additional square feet that we're talking about, like what is, what's the impact that is like something other than some people don't like the way it looks? I guess that's what I'm looking at. It's like, is there some kind of like objectively studied, like this will lead to, you know, at this mile per hour with a density of, I mean, we're looking at Hamilton, I mean, the density is what? How many other places could this go if we exclude residential uses? Like two, three? I mean, this is, it's hardly, I wouldn't call that a proliferation, in other words. So. Like what is, what's the real life impact that we would expect to this, that is causing us to do this for months? It's just, it's starting to seem ridiculous.
Consistent with that inquiry, what, how many requests do we have? Have electronic message boards in Ypsilanti? I mean, I know of one, and that's the one that's before us now.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that history is indicative though, because they've been not permitted, right? So like there, this isn't a case of like a special use permit where they're considered in some instances. So if somebody might be, um, keen to apply for one, right? Like we're, we're not reviewing an application for a sign. We're reviewing an application for a zoning text amendment, and I think that can be dissuading for folks that might want to sign.
I think that was, that's a great, great point. When I was on historic district commission, every, every business on Michigan Avenue wanted a electronic message board sign. Every business there wanted one. It would just keep coming back. The most recent, the last one I dealt with was the KFC. That started with, we want a zone of variance to get an electronic message board. It ended with the sign that's out there today.
I think that you're not going to find objective measures, right? Like we, we've asked for examples. We've asked for measurements and we've gotten those measurements, right? And, and Josh is reviewing the literature to see, you know, what we have to kind of go by objectively and what we have are other subjective measures from other communities, right? That is, that is, I think, the availability of like, you know, studies on message boards.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I was more talking about impact or negative impact in particular. So, I mean, my, some of my reticence is just that when we do these things for strictly, you know, aesthetic reasons or, you know, character of the neighborhood based reasons, it almost always intends, you know, tends to be exclusionary. Um, and it just, it. I, I'm just not a fan. So, um, if that's all there is, then, I mean, if that's all there is to it, then I just. I, I don't feel as strongly about reducing the size. That's all.
Other thoughts? I am hearing, I think, more support for 24 square feet. Um, that's what, uh, I would like to see from a revised text for our July meeting.
So you're wanting to change the sign ordinance as well to 24 to allow for.
This is, this would be specifically the core neighborhood freestanding sign maximum, uh, area. For non-residential uses.
Which is what the EMV percent will reference. So that's why it's being changed.
If it's 24, then the EM, the EMV percentage would then allow for 12 square foot EMV. Okay.
Yeah. And it sounds like we don't have consensus on that necessarily, uh, but that is, I think, the, the majority opinion I'm hearing. So we can, um, refine that as needed in our July meeting, but that gives us some direction at least to get modified text. Is there anything else that we want to request from a proposed, um, text amendment from staff for our July meeting?
I think Michelle brought up a good point about the, um.
Color?
The color. Yeah. Having, um, actually said it really well. What was your?
3,000 Kelvin is what I threw out.
In that, uh, I was actually thinking.
The content.
Oh, oh, yes. I, sorry. Yes. Um, whether or not the Shelby monochrome text, I don't know if that's content neutral.
Should just be monochrome, monochrome.
Right. I mean, I mean, we could try it. I, I mean, I don't know that it's been tested at the courts. For case law.
So what we came up with when we first, um, when we first started this discussion, um, and in regards to color. Um, are we still sticking with that or are we digging at?
Um, I.
Something different.
Liked the discussion around monochrome text when we discussed it the first time. Um, if you have the opportunity to run that by the city attorney before July, I'd appreciate it. No, we're going to continue on the commission discussion, but Josh is running point on that and he is available, uh, whenever city hall is open. Uh, anything else for the text amendment, uh, that we'll see in our July meeting? Okay. Josh, I think you have clear enough direction from us. Great. Um, the next item on the agenda after, after electronic message board side discussion.
One more point. One more point. So. Just, we're still on the EMV. Um, I asked for three different locations. Cause see, I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in burning candles into lumens. Cause if you, if you use lumens, that way it, it doesn't matter what color it is, it's going to, it's going, that would be the light intensity. So that, that way a sign can't be no brighter than whatever color it is, because it's, it's got to be under certain amount. So one candle is like 12 lumens. So the, that's why I wanted the, uh, reading from 94 and then the, I don't know if, whatever you want to call the, uh, Eastern Michigan cross. And then they got the one over there on Clark and Hewitt, which is a hundred percent of the original sign. That's an EM, EM, EMV.
So, uh, universities are accepted from the zoning ordinance.
We know that, but I'm just saying.
But also.
Light reading from there.
I'm going to be completely honest. I will not be going out at night by myself to get light readings again, because again, I was followed by someone. So I'm not like, I, and I, I talked to my boss and he told me that that is not something I need to be doing. So I will not be going out to get light readings. I apologize about.
I volunteer to do it.
I'll go with you. I can get a group of folks to go with you. Not, not a problem as long as we get what we need.
Uh, we can have a discussion offline. Uh, new business, anything that we need to discuss this evening? Uh, and then we have our public comment to close the meeting. Um, motion would be in order to open the public comment. Motion by Mike, support by Michael, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. If there's anybody that would like to share comments to planning commission, we just ask that you limit it to three minutes.
Now's your chance.
On, on content. They lost that case because it was considered not content neutral. Yes. But I don't think that's really an issue. It's really, it's really not a problem. Um, what Josh showed you, all of the, the information that he showed you were all ground signs. That was information, nothing to do with building signs and all this stuff to where we're going. And that's why I said at the beginning of this discussion, we are not talking about the percentage size of the sign. 50% is fine. That's not the issue. But what we're talking about is legibility, readability of signs. There is a, there's a book called the Michigan guide, sign guidebook. That's the resource that I would refer you to. It talks about how to do that, how to measure those things. And one of the first things you have to do when you're considering sign size is consider traffic speed. You have to consider that. So if you don't do that, what we've done, we've got almost 11, actually it's 11, uh, areas that have two sign options. 16 and 20 square feet. That's it. Out of 11 districts. Nine of those, and nine of those, I mean, I'm sorry, nine of those only can be as large as 20 and, and 16 square feet. The other, the other three go up to a hundred square feet. Those are GN and Pub and Parks and things like that. We're already making the distinction between signs, between static signs, all of those other things. Where you guys are sending Josh is, is really down the rabbit hole. Really. I, I don't know what he's gonna gain. But unless he's doing the due diligence of doing readability, legibility, he's not going to come back with anything that, that's up there. Coming up with an arbitrary 24 square feet is not based on any metric. You have to have a metric and that's, and sign guide will tell you how to use that. Don't just come up with an arbitrary number because you think that looks bad. It's not, that doesn't make sense. The reason we have 17 square feet of our previous sign is because the, the zoning board said, yes, because of the speed, it's unreadable. Therefore it was a practical difficulty. So increase this particular property that I'm doing, and I'm talking about Second Baptist. Increase that size to at least 17 square feet to be able to read it based on the track. That's already established. That's in your, in your records. We're not recreating anything, but if you create a policy that makes that sign smaller and unreadable, what have you really done? Is it a benefit to the community? I, I would, I would, no, it's not. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comments in the room or on Zoom?
Sure. Introduce myself really. I've been sitting here. I'm one of the ministers at Second Baptist Church and I, uh, I lived in Belleville, Michigan for a number of years. Only about a month ago, I moved back to Ypsilanti. I was in the township now. I'm in the city. And I live at 315 Catherine Street. I'm the resident right next door to the sign where the sign is going to be located. So it's going to impact, you know, my, me and my family, but, um, just wanted to introduce myself, Wardell Jones, one of the ministers. I've been in the planning area for, uh, or in Michigan rather, since 1990. And, um, I just appreciate you having us here tonight. Thank you.
Uh, motion would be in order to close the public comment.
Support.
Motion by Michael, support by Phil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else for discussion this evening?
Yeah. Is, is there a way we can find out if, um, the planning department or the city owns a copy of that? That APA Michigan signage guidebook?
I'm sorry, the what?
The American Planning Association, the Michigan chapter has a, the, uh, the signage guidebook is, is there a way we can, we can find out if we already own that?
I can look, um, I have no idea.
Or if someone else has a copy.
I'm sure I have one.
I'm sure it's online.
Yeah, that's 15, that's $15.
I'm sure. I'm sure it'll come up.
For now, the city could maybe buy some copies.
If it's available and you can share it with the planning mission.
Yeah.
And if you got any money, uh, we would, they have the book too.
All right. That feels like a wrap.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, do not do it like that.
Support, 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 all kinds of.
Motion by Michelle, support by Brian, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Time for some debate action.
Tell us any more about yourself, Michelle. We didn't get a chance to do that.
Yeah. My name's Michelle. Thanks for letting me crash. Um, I've lived here three years, California transplant.